Good evening, everybody. I would like to call the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors Meeting of June eleventh, twenty twenty via Zoom to order.
Please, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, J C. Thank you again, and good evening, White Marsh. This is our third Board of Supervisor meeting via Zoom. The COVID twenty nineteen or the COVID nineteen pandemic is still upon us, but we have begun to peek out of our homes as we've moved into the yellow phase. As we have begun to do this, our community, our nation, and our world has faced another crisis, one that has been around far longer than COVID nineteen. Tonight, we will pause for a moment of silence to mourn the death of George Perry Floyd, who was killed by a police officer on May twenty fifth. Let us always remember his name and that of others that have died because of injustice. I speak on behalf of our board that our intentions are to work collectively together with our residents and our police department to find mechanisms to help us communicate with each other, to address concerns and issues. Our intention is to establish a structure that will move us forward together, communicating respectfully together. With this said, I will turn it over to our Chief of Police, Chris Ward, who has some comments for us tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair Chairman. The Board of Supervisors has asked me to speak this evening in response to the emails and inquiries that the Board, the Township Manager, and I have been receiving over the past couple of weeks in reference to the policies and procedures of the White Marsh Township Police Department as they pertain to some of the issues that have arisen out of the death of George Floyd while in police custody in Minneapolis, Minnesota. I want to let everyone know that I have written this information down and will be reading this information in an attempt to address as many of these concerns as possible. Please understand that this is a first step in sharing information with the public, and I personally look forward to meeting with residents and groups to have more personal conversations. As I have mentioned to those that I have spoken with or corresponded with, COVID nineteen has made face-to-face meetings difficult thus far, but hopefully COVID nineteen will continue to recede and face-to-face meetings can occur more easily. First, I want to point out that the White Marsh Township Police Department is one of one hundred and twenty accredited police departments in the state of Pennsylvania. There are one thousand one hundred and seventeen police agencies in Pennsylvania. Our police department was first accredited in July of two thousand eight, and we are currently in the process of completing our fourth re-accreditation, which should be completed by the middle of this month. The accreditation is granted by the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association. Accreditation is the progressive and time-proven way of helping institutions evaluate and improve their overall performance. The cornerstone of this strategy lies in the promulgation of standards containing a clear statement of professional objectives. The Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police through the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission are constantly evaluating and updating police policies and procedures to make sure that agencies are utilizing the best police practices possible. These policies and procedures are always evolving and improving, which helps each accredited agency evolve and improve. Many people have asked about body-worn cameras. The White Marsh Township Police Department does not have body-worn cameras. Until two thousand seventeen, the Pennsylvania Wiretapped Act was in conflict with police officers wearing body-worn cameras. But that was amended under Act twenty-two of twenty seventeen. In twenty eighteen, the Pennsylvania District Attorney's Association issued guidance on the best practices for implementing and utilizing body-worn cameras. The White Marsh Police Department does use in-car cameras or dash cams in all of our vehicles that are used for patrol. The in-car camera systems are all manufactured by WatchGuard. WatchGuard also has the ability to provide body cameras that would operate on the same IT platform as the in-car cameras. Some of our neighboring police departments have recently purchased and deployed WatchGuard body cameras. We have researched pricing for WatchGuard's latest and most reliable body cameras, and we are receiving invaluable feedback from those other local police agencies on their successes and failures with these cameras. It should be noted that the cost to outfit our entire thirty-six-man police department would be in excess of seventy thousand dollars. People is that people have asked if we have a use-of-force policy. Yes, General Order one point three point one, Use of Force, addresses the use of force. This policy requires the review of every use-of-force occurrence. That review is performed by senior officers, and improper uses of force are subject to disciplinary review. Cases where the use of force is well outside the normal range, assistance can be obtained from the Montgomery County District Attorney's Office through the Montgomery County Detective Bureau, and all cases where deadly forces utilized by a member of the White Marsh Township Police Department are investigated by the DA's office. General Order one point eight point three, Bias-Based Policing. The purpose of this procedure is to unequivocally state that profiling racial and ethnic status or gender or sexual orientation or any combination of these is totally unacceptable and provide guidelines to officers to prevent such occurrences while protecting officers when they act within the dictates of law and policy from unwarranted accusations. Any person may file a complaint with the department if they feel they have been stopped or searched based on racial, ethnic, sexual orientation, or gender-based profiling. No person shall be discouraged, intimidated, or coerced from filing such complaint or discriminating discriminated against because they file such a complaint. General Order two point three point one, Complaint Review, Police Internal Affairs, guides us on investigating all reports of police misconduct, including improper use of force, profiling, or discrimination. Our procedures dictate that we accept and investigate all complaints against police officers, even those filed anonymously. More serious and complicated complaints against the police can be investigated with the assistance of the District Attorney's Office. There were also questions about mental health. Some were concerned with dealing with people who are experiencing a mental health crisis, and others were concerned with police officers' mental health. General Order two point seven point eight, Mental Illness, addresses dealing with individuals who may be experiencing mental health issues. The White Marsh Police Department is fortunate to receive guidance and assistance from the Montgomery County Emergency Services in this area. Emergency Services provides the most up-to-date information and practices to all Montgomery County police officers. They provide training, and they respond to assist us with mental health intervention when necessary. Our local partner for assistance, guidance, and training for mental health issues is Brooklyn Behavioral Health, which is located in the Fort Washington section of the township. They will also provide us with updates on the care of persons in need of mental health assistance, and they be and they provide training in our station for our officers. As for the mental health issues with our police officers, every police officer receives a psychological evaluation as a condition of his or her employment. From there, our insurance provider, Delaware Valley Trust, provides training and support for our personal health, our personal mental health. Monthly newsletters provide insight and ideas to include early warning signs for mental health issues, to include stress and anxiety. Most recently, we received information on dealing with critical incidents, like those that have arisen out of the recent civil unrest. The Delaware Valley Trust also provides anonymous services to officers and their families who are experiencing mental health issues. All employees of the township were provided contact cards with information on how to access these anonymous services. Supervisors may reissue these cards to employees that are showing signs of need. Finally, if needed, police supervisors have the right and responsibility to remove an officer from duty if they feel the officer is experiencing a mental health crisis. Voluntary or non-voluntary evalu evaluation will then occur. There were questions about de-escalation training. Yes, all police officers in White Marsh Township have received de-escalation training. Even though de-escalation training has been around for a few years, this discipline is rapidly evolving and becoming more refined and available. In an attempt to keep our officers up to date on this training, we have sent officers to train to become the trainers for this discipline. Their training was provided by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Institute of Law Enforcement Education. Policies and procedures of a police department are a living and breathing entity. Policies and procedures change constantly as the world around us changes and newer, better, best practices are discovered and created. The events of the last few weeks with the George Floyd protest, not to mention the events of the last few months with the COVID nineteen pandemic, are going to lead to changes in policing and changes to our policies and procedures. As we always do, the White Marsh Township Police Department will look to the organizations that lead the way in police reform and new or improved policies and practices. These organizations include the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association, and the Police Chiefs of Montgomery County Association. All these organizations work with stakeholders internationally, nationally, and locally to develop the very best guidelines and principles for today's police officers. On a local level, the White Marsh Township Police Department runs two programs that give our residents access and insight into the police department. Our COP Camp program is specifically designed for ten-to-eleven-year-olds to introduce them to police work, let them see inside the police department, and experience some of the jobs and tasks that the local police perform. This one-week summer camp also allows our COP campers to meet members of the department. Unfortunately, COVID nineteen has caused us to cancel this year's COP Camp. For adults, we have the Citizens Police Academy. This is a ten-night program that we run in the fall. Academy members meet one night a week for ten weeks, and they get to see the inner workings of the police department and meet every member of our agency. This interactive educational program gives attendees the opportunity to see how we work and some of the tools that we use to perform our job, while affording them while affording them the opportunity to interact with our officers and ask questions about the White Marsh Township Police Department and policing in general. I highly encourage any member of the community who is interested to sign up for this year's Citizens Police Academy. Information is available on the township website, or you can contact Sergeant Brian Mack or myself at the police department. As I stated at the beginning of my statement, this is the first step in sharing information with the community. The Board of Supervisors, the Township Manager, and I look forward to future meetings, conversations, and interactions with the community on these topics. As COVID nineteen passes, it will be easier to have these interactions and in some form in person. In closing, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for allowing me this opportunity to address the public during their meeting. The Board of Supervisors of White Marsh Township not only supports the police department and encourages our constant growth and education as police officers, they expect us for they expect us to strive to be the best police department that we can be. The Board of the Board of Supervisors and the residents of White Marsh Township have the right to expect that, and we, the officers of White Marsh Township Police Department, have a duty to deliver services that reflect that. Please remember that we are not perfect as police as a police department. We are always looking to improve. We are always open for conversation and education, and I look forward to hearing from and meeting with many of you to discuss issues in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I sincerely appreciate you taking the time tonight to summarize and comment, and I know you'll be sticking around. I think there were some questions that were coming in, and we will, you know, of course, have public discussion at the end of the meeting, which will give an opportunity for people to ask questions. So I appreciate again what you said, and I also want to just kind of refresh everybody that we had a Human Relations Commission that was created back in November of two thousand eleven, which was put in place to address discrimination, specifically, I think, related to employee employment and housing. But I would like to ask Mr. Miller if you would consider, please, looking into this, that we have this already, this commission in place. I don't believe it's been called into action for a while, so we have this already. I'd like to look at that as an opportunity to utilize it, modify it, use it as a stepping stone, but to create some mechanisms to move us forward concretely. And I would like to be able to give an update at our next Board of Supervisor meeting.
Well done. Well done.
Excellent. So moving on, I would like to also take a moment to share, for those that do not know, of the passing of our beloved canine Hugo. Hugo, for those that you don't know, was born in January of twenty oh eight, started his service with our township in August of twenty oh nine, and retired in December of twenty seventeen. And very sad to hear of his passing, and we offer his handler, Officer Sweeney, and his family our deepest sympathies and thank them for their commitment and dedication to Hugo and to our township. I know it's a lot of money and training to be a handler, and they, as all animals, I'm a pet lover, and, you know, they become part of your family. So I deepest sympathies to the Sweeney family. Moving on to our next item, we're still in announcements here, folks. We're only six months into two thousand twenty, and there have been unprecedented challenges that we have faced. And despite these, there are still reasons to celebrate. I have been very impressed with our area educational institutions and how they have honored their graduates from preschool all the way through college. People have come up with creative ideas to social distance and celebrate, and we have new language now that we use, like car parades. This time last year, I don't know anybody would really know what a car parade meant exactly, but now we're using that commonly. Last night, we had the PW Colonial School District High School graduation, which I believe was a car parade. Hopefully, Chief Ward all went smoothly with that. I saw a lot of pictures.
Everything went very smoothly. The parents and the graduates were very appreciative, as were the teachers from all of our colonial schools who had the opportunity. It's a hard way to say to say goodbye to the students as they move on to bigger and better things. They've missed out on a lot, but they tried to add in as much as they could to take away some of the pain from what they missed out on. It was a very nice event, and I'd like to thank the emergency services for assisting the police department and helping this Colonial School District with that.
That's good to hear. I'm relieved to hear that it went smoothly, and that's a really important comment that you just said about the teachers having a chance to say goodbye, because it, you know, certainly is a time for the graduates to celebrate, but, you know, the teachers are going through really difficult times as well as they've not been able to go back to classrooms and say goodbye, or when they do go back, the kids are already moving on and up, so, you know. Our hearts go out to the graduates and certainly all of the teachers out there, J C Toll being one of them. I know she was in her classroom this week saying goodbye and cleaning up and getting ready for the next the next challenge as we continue on in two thousand twenty. Okay, so with that being said, I would like for us as a board to consider a proclamation for our two thousand twenty graduates, and I'm gonna read it here. White Marsh Township Proclamation. Whereas the graduating class of two thousand twenty is living in extraordinary and unprecedented times as they conclude their studies virtually instead of in the classroom, surrounded by classmates, friends, and teachers. And whereas, due to the many challenges of the coronavirus pandemic, the members of the graduating classes are in the unenviable position of being unable to walk with their classmates, to receive their diplomas and other much-deserved recognitions. And whereas, the two thousand twenty graduates of the public and private grade schools, high schools, colleges, and universities attended by White Marsh Township residents are to be praised for their diligence in accomplishing their objectives while facing numerous challenges. And whereas, the Board of Supervisors of White Marsh Township sincerely recognize this wonderful time of life for the many graduates who go forward like none before them. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of White Marsh Township congratulates the class of two thousand twenty and wishes all the graduates a most successful future. So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this proclamation.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion approved. And another positive comment, I'll turn this over to Mr. Miller. Would you like to share, please, some happy news amongst our staff?
Yes, thank you, Chair Duster. One individual you don't see on our staff here tonight is Sean Halbom, and we're very pleased to congratulate him and his wife Lauren on the birth of their first child. Liam Halbom is at home with mother and now new father, resting well, so we're very excited for them, and we'll see him again at our next meeting if he's able to survive the first month of being a father. So it's very exciting for White Marsh Township family.
Thank you. So Fran, I'd like to turn it to you to finish with our announcements.
Thanks, Lauren. I do have quite a bit here. First is our Fourth of July Parade is canceled. The leadership of the White Marsh Township Fourth of July Parade Committee made the difficult decision to recommend canceling the two thousand twenty parade. They have been closely and carefully monitoring the situation in those of surrounding communities in the region that hold special events in the summer and the Fourth of July holiday. The overwhelming overwhelming majority of those townships and boroughs have chosen to cancel or are recommending the events be canceled. In addition, the health and safety of our residents, participants, sponsors, vendors, entertainers, volunteers, and staff was a priority in making this decision. The Parks and Recreation Department is planning a virtual Fourth of July celebration with links to parades, fireworks, crafts, et cetera, for the community to enjoy that will be sent out via the department's social media, eBlast, and Facebook. The basketball courts are open for free play. Upon entering yellow phase, the Parks and Recreation Department opened the basketball courts in White Marsh Township Parks for free play. That means non-organized, and that happened on Tuesday, June ninth, in compliance with CDC and Health Department guidelines. Playground and rental of pavilion update. The playgrounds and public restrooms will remain closed until the green phase in accordance with the governor's plan and CDC guidelines for health and compliance. Summer camps. The Parks and Recreation Department is very happy to announce that we will be holding summer camps at Miles Park and the Cedar Grove Barn this summer with modifications to be in compliance with the regulations. In order to meet these requirements and provide the highest degree of safety for the participants and staff, the opening of summer camps will begin on Monday, July sixth. In addition, as we enter the green phase, the Parks and Recreation Department is currently taking reservations for one for our one-week specialty camps scheduled for July and August. These camps include Theater Horizon Camp, sports camps for basketball, lacrosse, soccer, flag football, track and field, cheerleading, and baseball, cooking camp and service and yoga camp. In addition, we'll be offering engineering for kids in a virtual format with topics that include junior engineering camp, scratch programming, space pioneers, apprentice computer-aided design, and scratch game design. These programs will follow COVID nineteen CDC and Pennsylvania Department guidelines. The Township Administration Building and Coontz Park are open to the public in a limited manner during the governor's yellow phase. The hours are Monday through Friday, nine AM to one PM, or by appointment. Visitors are required to wear a mask and practice social distancing when entering the buildings. The contractors working at the intersection improvements at Joshua Road and Stenton Avenue will move the detour to the other side of Joshua Road along the Philadelphia Cricket Club on June fifteenth. This section of the road will be closed for approximately six weeks. That's it.
Thanks, Fran. Appreciate that. We're going on to our approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes for May fourteenth, two thousand twenty?
A mo.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. And now we'll move on to board discussion items, public or, yeah, board public discussion items, and I will turn it over to our finance director. Nate, would you mind?
Certainly. All right, so throughout the pandemic, we we take a serious look at our finances as far as working with each of the department heads to see what programs or what items that we originally budgeted for that, you know, we can keep a close eye on or working with them for any major expenses that are coming down the pipes, so that way we can ensure the safety of the township and ensure it's strong financing. So I'm gonna bring to the screen this is a quick look at some of our strongest revenue areas. Let me know if you can see it. So looking at this screen. All right, our real estate taxes is something that we really wanted to stay focused on at the with the approval of the Township Manager, the Finance Department stayed open throughout the COVID pandemic, and that really resulted in good results for the township itself. Being able to process payments, being able to ensure that our residents had the means of being able to continue to make their real estate tax payments, which kept the cash flow going, which allowed the township to continue its operations and minimize the impact of or the financial impact of the COVID nineteen pandemic, allowed for us to bring in forty percent of our overall revenue goal for the year, so we're right on pace. We actually were able to secure and realize ninety percent of our real estate tax collections by the end of May. So that's really good. We outperformed prior year's numbers as far as collections and revenues. I do attribute that to the young ladies here at the Finance Department for being able to, you know, work with the residents and trying to, you know, while keeping themselves safe, keep the residents safe, and provide alternate while keeping thems themselves safe, keep the residents safe and provide alternate means of them being able to uh make those payments. We can also see some of the benefits uh 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 looking at it on a lighter note of the uh pandemic is that with the lowering of the rates, we saw a lot of people coming in, any of those uh individuals who are delinquent that that's with their taxes, we definitely worked with them um to that we're looking to take advantage of the lower rates for the refinancing. So we we saw a a significant bump and increase in our delinquent revenues as far as interims as well. Um, we did see some impact in our Act five eleven as far as with um business tax collections. However, um we were able to minimize. When we were originally looking at it in the beginning of May, we were looking at a shortfall of almost three million dollars. We were able to work with each of our department heads um and our vendors. Uh, and we were able to lower this impact down to uh just under a million dollars. Um, so the township is right on pace for where it needs to be. Um, also by working with our different department heads, we were able to keep our expenditures down uh total expenditures down to less than thirty percent. Um, we're halfway through the year, so that um root that impact definitely helped to shore up the township's finances and give us some stable footing as we go to, you know, the yellow zone and and look forward to going uh to green as we get back to full steam. Um, what that means uh for the township is uh we were in a great standing. We did not, we were not in a position where um we needed to furlough jobs. Um, and that was certainly um, you know, appreciated by the the folks here at the township and the different staff members. I do want to express my uh gratitude to each of the department heads um from the Public Works Department, the Chief of Police, um Parks and Rec and all the other departments. Um, it definitely helped out. Um, uh, one other area that shined pretty brightly, uh working with Charlie uh Gutten Plan as well as Bob Stavinsky. Um, our permits, um license and permits is at an all-time high um for this this period of time. So we're at ninety-three percent uh to budget on that. So um, all in all, the township was able to fare this uh pretty well um as well as um, you know, we were able to deploy um our employees with uh the equipment they needed to be able to continue working throughout this pandemic. So just wanted to give uh some light on that. One other um item I wanted to discuss with the board this evening or present to the board this evening. Um, is we need we uh when looking at the uh CARES Act and what it was attempting to do uh with regards to allowing employees of different organizations that felt the impacts of the pandemic was to allow them to access funds of their, you know, different retirement accounts to try to help offset uh so some of the load that was uh put upon them uh and their families. Uh, our current, the way our our current retirement four oh one is structured, it does not allow for them to uh take that withdrawal, it does not uh recognize uh the intentions of the CARES Act. So we did, working with the Township Manager, uh I and our investment uh management team, we were able to find a way to be able to recognize um and be able to, you know, hold to the CARES Act's intentions by allowing them to do the CARES Act alone. So that would be something that we present to you, the board, to uh come to vote on and I'll I'll leave that to uh the Township Manager for that, but just to give you that briefing, that's what that's about so that we can help some of our uh our employees here at the township be able to stay afloat um and and rest a little easier by allowing them to access those funds um and feel less of an impact.
Thanks Nate, I appreciate that. Um, you know, this is a public discussion time. If anybody has a question related to finances right now, um, you know, you are more than welcome. Just I Mister Miller, who we can unmute people so that you can ask questions or you can type it in the chat. But we'll pause for a moment here if there are any that want to speak.
Someone wants to speak, they can mention it in the chat and I'll unmute them.
Do we have any board comments or questions right now for Nate? Eli, I see your question about the video. People choose themselves whether to be displayed um to display a video or not. That's not something we control. We can just control whether it's mute or not mute. Okay. Do we have any other questions that have come up that I missed? I don't see any. Is there a way that we are muting video from our end?
If you'd like me to unmute everybody, I can unmute everybody, but I'm not.
Not mute, I'm sorry, video. Is there a way that we're blocking video?
No, they can, they can come on.
Yeah, I've actually been on other um kind of large public zooms like this and generally that they do block everyone else. And there's actually a a feature on Zoom where you only display those that are on the panel. Um, you know, if you think about if we had two, you know, pages here worth of people, those that are watching in essence want to see the panel members. And when they're speaking, we could all be spread out amongst these thirty or forty different images on multiple pages. So.
He I see a couple residents.
Oh no, it looks like clearly they're able to undo it themselves. I I I actually thought we were doing it for a reason, which I would, which I would support, but um people want to um show the video, they're certainly welcome to.
Yeah, I just want to make sure there's nothing from our end that we're doing that I'm aware of, because I do see, you know, a couple residents here showing themselves. If anybody else is trying to show their picture and can't, if you can please um, comment on that and we can try to work on that from our end while we move along. We'll have public discussion comments at the end as well, so you know, we can you know, check back in on finance part.
Laura, I'm sorry, I'll do that. I mean, if if folks want to show themselves at the bottom, there's a stop video button. Um, they can go there or they can just hover over their name and there's three dots in the little blue square. And they can, they can hit that and it was, you know, they can show their video or then they can stop the video. Sorry, that was my dog calling up.
Are we okay to move on? Okay. So let's go into action items and I'm gonna look at the resolutions here. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash fourteen authorizing the submission of a Walk Works Grant application for the study of Washington Street and the riverfront of Spring Mill Station?
Second.
Mister Miller?
I'm going to turn it over to Mister Gutten Plan for a brief explanation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, this is um, I hope you can see this. Um, this is our study area that was um put together for our Transportation and Community Development Initiative. The TCDI grant that we applied for earlier this year. It was a hundred thousand dollar grant through the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission for which we have been awarded eighty thousand dollars. Um, which based on all the competition, that was very good news. Um, would somebody just confirm that you are seeing the study area?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm always just a little bit concerned when we do these zooms. Um, we are now asking the board to pass a resolution um authorizing the Walk Works Grant application, which would be for twenty thousand dollars. And if we were able to get the twenty thousand dollar grant, we would then have a total of a hundred thousand dollars through grants, which was our original target for grant funding for the um study. The study which is called a multimodal connection study of Washington Street and the riverfront of Spring Mill Station. This, as you may recall, is an outgrowth of our two thousand and sixteen uh riverfront plan and to some extent um an outgrowth of our current comprehensive plan update that's still in draft form. Um, this study um is aimed at recommending improvements to resolve some circulation issues, including some dead end um road issues uh down in this Spring Mill area, particularly Lee Street and Washington Street, which we've talked a great deal about. Uh, looking at some pedestrian issues, looking at bicycle and transit issues and trying basically to get a complete transportation or what is being called an active transportation plan. And that's specifically what um the Walk Works Grants are designed to do. Um, they're administered, interestingly, through the Pennsylvania Department of Health in conjunction with the University of Pittsburgh Graduate School of Public Health Center for Public Health Practice. Um, and active transportation plans such as this are specifically what they um are targeting and what their priority is. Um, we are working with our Engineers Office, Gilmore and Associates, to put the grant application together. Gilmore has had experience with these grants, has successfully um obtained grants for other clients and we are hopeful that this is um another candidate that they would fund. So at this point, we would be submitting the application sometime between now and the deadline of July second and the resolution would authorize that. And again, it would be for twenty thousand dollar grant in conjunction with the TCDI grant of eighty thousand dollars for hopefully a total grant allocation of a hundred thousand. The estimate for the project total is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. The rest would be um matched by the township, um part in terms of cash and part in terms of in-kind services. That is specifically what the uh Resolution twenty twenty dash fourteen is asking for is the authorization to submit that application.
Thank you, Charlie. I mean, that's fantastic to have these two grants coming together for this project. Uh, I certainly appreciate your time and energy on researching that and Gilmore's help with that. Uh, is there any public or board comment on this first? Do we have any public comment? Alright. Seeing none, Mister Miller, will you please call the roll? Oh wait, I do see one, I'm hold, hold please. Quick question that came in here. Sedal, you can, do you want me to read your question or would you like to say it yourself?
Do the study areas align?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'm wondering whether the the two study areas align precisely. Um, and how this um application and the one that's already been approved tie in with the trail study or feasibility that will pick up on Butler Pike or Fayette Street um along the, I think it's along the power line and eventually make its way down to the Spring Mill area. How are they all? How do how do all these work together, if at all?
If if I may, the um, this is uh the study area, I'm sorry, I took down the share, but the study area includes the lower end of the Pico right of way intentionally to be able to coordinate with the trail study. Um, this is part of the effort of the study in general and particularly uh the focus of Walk Works is to look at pedestrian access trails and other forms of transportation to make sure that they are coordinated and don't conflict with each other. So there'll be, there will be coordination between the two for sure.
And how does the timing work with these three uh grants? And and I guess it's two studies, three grants, am I correct? Is that correct?
Yeah. It's actually, it's actually four grants because the Miracle Nature Trail which runs through the power lines has two grants. A TCI, TCDI grant as well as a DC NR grant. So there was actually, if we if we are able to get um this grant, there would be four grants.
How does the timing um work in terms of the two study areas and the four grants?
Well, each one will be studied and the timing is such that each one is studied independently um at some level. And then at the same time, there is opportunity at those areas in which they are there's connectivity to allow for the discussion about what the connectivity would look like. Uh, because uh just from a standpoint of down by the river versus where you would be on the power lines of Butler Pike are very different. And what we're trying to accomplish in each are a bit different other than connectivity. So uh though they're gonna ru-run a bit independent of one another, but um we're working on it together in a sense that we are using uh Gilmore, our uh engineering firm, so they'll be overseeing um both of those projects. So there'll obviously be a lot of symmetry between those projects. But each grant has its own requirements and responsibilities that uh regulations that we need to follow. Uh, but they're, they won't be done necessarily of vacuum of one another, but there are certain things that each of those grants require that we must meet in order to uh continue to obtain the funding that we awarded or will be awarded.
Okay, and I have, I have two comments uh to close with. Um, one is that I I hope that um there'll be careful consideration given to how the public can have a voice in um in these feasibility, a meaningful voice. And finally, I would just like to to reiterate comment I've made in the past with regard to development along Washington Street, in particular, um nine oh one Washington. I really do believe that um the community would be best served if these feasibilities were completed prior to the developer um determining how connections will be made uh and how Washington Street will be opened up um as a result of the project at nine oh one Washington. I'd I'd much rather that we had the benefit, we all had the benefit of the results of these feasibility before approvals were issued for the nine oh one townhouse project uh which will add sixty-two townhouses down in Flood Plain at the old Finneran and Hales site.
Uh, ju- just to uh, uh Chair Nestor, just to address the uh public participation, each of these grants um have a requirement of public participation. So on top of the fact that this would all be done in the public, they have a requirement of public participation and I I heard it, the term meaningful uh participation. Um, I believe that it'll be meaningful just like any other uh participation that we've had throughout the process. So everybody will have a voice at these public hearings to have input into the projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just if I may, sit down to address your other point. Uh, the developer at nine oh one Washington does not have authority to determine what happens on Washington, nor will they make those decisions. Those are township decisions. Uh, so I just wanted to make that that clear.
I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Jim, as our engineer, do you have anything to add about the studies or the grants?
I think Charlie did a great job of summing it all up. Uh, it's a wonderful opportunity to have a grant to match, to act as your matching funds for a another grant. So really helps the township out in that regard.
And with respect to the coordination of the studies. And with respect to the coordination of the studies and the grants and, you know, all parties working together, you feel comfortable with that process?
I do, um our planning department uh works very well with Charlie and the township and all the township staff. So I feel very confident we can coordinate it well.
Very good. Thanks. Okay, I think we're ready, Mr. Miller, will you please call the roll?
Supervisor McCusker?
Yes.
Supervisor Toll?
Yes.
Supervisor Manuel?
Yes.
Supervisor Drosner?
Yes.
Darren Nestor?
Yes.
Although a note for the record, that was out of order, Mr. Miller.
Was I out of order?
I mean, not in a bad way, just not in the proper order.
Uh it's been too long since we've been together.
That's right.
We have one more chance here, we have one more resolution. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash fifteen amending the non-uniformed retirement plan with IC M A R C. To permit employees to take loans from their defined contribution plan through December thirty-first of twenty twenty?
So moved, second.
Mr. Miller?
I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Kritnen, who gave a brief e- explanation during his uh report of finances. But uh go over this uh with the board right now, so Nate?
All right, I I do apologize for addressing it a little early. Um with this resolution eh has in mind is for as I spoke to previously. Uh to with the intentions of the CARES Act to help out uh uh all the um citizens. To be able to bear the brunt of any financial impacts due to the COVID pandemic. Um while we were able to uh say not have to furlough jobs, there are some impacts uh to the families of the the. Employees here at White Marsh Township. Uh what this would allow for them to do is to be able to tap into uh those retirement funds to help stave off um. Any financial impacts and and and, you know, to follow the intentions of the CARES Act, keeps us. So this will allow them to take a loan therefore through uh the December thirty-first. After that, um we would go back to our normal structure of uh not allowing them to access those funds. Until retirement or um termination from the or separation from the township.
Very good, thanks Nate, no apologies needed for saying it twice. I think it helps to hear it a second time to clarify what what this is all about. Are there any board comments? Any public comments?
Yes, Laura, well, I know you're asking for public comment, but I'm thinking about, is there, is there a limit as to what they can take out? Uh I mean, I guess these are, you know, obviously all adults, they can make their own decisions, but, you know, I also. Don't want to make sure, you know, everyone's being prudent, you know, regarding these these funds.
Correct, there's a limit to what they can take out, they're not able to take out more than half um of their benefit. Uh so that way they are protected, we do want to allow for them to have um some protections and then secure some retirement funds. Um but as I said, we do want to make sure that they're able to kind of stave off. Uh these these loans would allow them to structure a payment in which um is feasible to them. Um and it would be payroll deductible, so. Um we would, it would not be a burden on them where they have to figure out how they're going to make this payment. Um it makes it really reasonable and feasible for our employees to be able to get this, get this aid at um at this time. And still have some means of retirement investment.
Thank you, no, I think that's great, I think, yeah, obviously, our our employees are lucky to have been able to continue working and. Been able to manage the finances as well, we appreciate that from your standpoint, but. Um certainly they may have spouses, you know, or household members that have lost their jobs and uh maybe in some financial. You know, struggles right now, so I'm glad that we can do something to help them out.
Agreed. Any other public or board comment? Okay, seeing hearing none, Mr. Miller, please call the roll.
Supervisor McCusker?
Yes.
Supervisor Toll?
Yes.
Supervisor Manuel?
Yes.
Supervisor Drosner?
Yes.
Chair Nestor?
Yes.
I know I did it wrong again.
It's all good.
Still five oh, we're we're okay.
Approved.
Thank you. And the employees, thank you, so appreciate it.
Great, moving on to motions. Think that's where we are, do I have a motion to authorize the ordinance advertisement? To purchase real estate, real, real estate property under Act one fifty-three. To allow twenty-seven point eight-two acres um conservation easement at the Highlands Mansion located at seven zero zero one Chief Lane. In the amount of three million ten thousand dollars.
So moved, second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nestor. Um the board is considering the authorization to advertise an ordinance to purchase real property in accordance with the White Marsh Township. Home Rule Charter for the twenty-seven point eight-two acre conservation easement at the Highlands Mansion. Which is located at seven thousand one Chief Lane. The township has been working with the Highlands Historical Society and Representative Mary Jo Daly. To preserve the forty-four acre historic property since the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission. The HMC has included the property on their list of properties to divest. As a result, the Highlands Historical Society approached the township with a plan that would allow the state. To sell the property to HHS Highland Historical Society for a dollar. And then the township would enter into an agreement of sale with HHS. The township would purchase a conservation easement from HHS to preserve the twenty-seven point eight-two acres of open space. In the amount of three point zero one million dollars. The funds would come from the township's Open Space Earned Income Tax Fund and be used by HHS. Who eventually improve and maintain the historic late eighteenth century Georgian mansion and two acre formal gardens. The state legislature would ult- would have to ultimately approve the deal presented above. And Representative Daly has agreed to introduce legislation with the brief support of PH MC. And the Pennsylvania Department of General Services, which is the Pennsylvania department that oversees real estate transactions for the Commonwealth. As of now, the township is working with Representative Daly on proposed language for the bill that would protect the investment. Of the township's purchase of the conservation easement should the property revert back at any point in the future to the state. We would then be able to move forward with the adoption of the ordinance. The Township Open Space Committee has recommended and supported this transaction and the use of open space EIT funds. For the purchase of the conservation easement. We greatly appreciate the support from the Highlands Historical Society, who we've worked with now for the better part of probably almost two years. And their real commitment uh to the preservation of the Highlands mansion.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, I will say this has been, we've had many conversations uh just within this year. Uh with all that you mentioned, with the Highlands, with the Historical Si- Society, with the White Marsh Foundation. So there's strong interest in making this happen, so this is the beginning with this advertisement. Um I'm hopeful that this happens, we still have a road to go with it, but, you know, I'm I'm certainly hopeful. Um are there any board comments related?
I think this is a great opportunity to try to protect a large swath of land in the township. Um obviously, there's a lot of steps to go before this happens and it becomes final, but. You know, it's a beautiful property and I think uh we're on the right path here to protecting it, so. Appreciate all the work that's been going on behind the scenes to make it happen. And uh, you know, I look forward to seeing what work we can get done here to to, you know, continue to preserve that land.
Thanks, Mike. Uh I see, um Eli, you have a comment, go ahead.
Um who will control what goes on uh at this site if uh this ultimately goes through? I'm concerned, I heard some names, I heard White Marsh Foundation, um and of course, the people that run the Highlands. Um to me, the White Marsh Foundation has not been good neighbors to White Marsh Township. Um they, when there was the purchase of the uh tract of land from Erdenheim Farm. Uh there was supposed to be a community garden built, uh that never happened, there was supposed to be a dog park built, that never happened. Um this, they're the same group that put that temporary road uh along White Marsh Neighbors on Fountain Green Drive. Um with regard to the the land itself, um the Penny Pack um. CSA, I forget exactly what they were called, they entered into an agreement uh to farm that land. Uh uh which was a perfectly appropriate uh piece of land. You go back and you look at um some of the press clippings, it was this great presentation to have. Uh this land that was farmed um become a farm, bring people to the historical site. And it was supposed to be a working joint venture and they were kicked out of there. Um and there's been really no explanation as to why uh they were asked to leave. After, I know they spent well over a hundred thousand dollars in investments um to use that land as farmland. Um and uh provide food for anybody that wanted to purchase something from the CSA. Um and and to me, that would have been a tremendous opportunity for White Marsh Township residents. Um I I personally, I'm all for preserving open space. But if the open space is only going to be able to be used by a limited number of folks. Like, for example, the horse people that ride through there now, there are horse trails that go through there. Um, you know, that they use that, that's great. But is it gonna, is there going to be hiking trail setup? Will White Marsh retain a level of control over what goes on there?
So Eli, I'll speak and then Rick, if you have any comments, you're welcome to to certainly add in. I will tell you that I have had a lot of concerns based on other events that have happened in the township. That the township does have some say in this property that we are considering purchasing. That there is um eh, there's a say in this. And my understanding is that the the grounds, the twenty-seven acres uh is going to be passive use. Um but there are conversations to make sure that we are working together, that it's not uh just. We're giving over this land and they get to do whatever they want. Um Mr. Miller, do you want to add any other comments?
I would just, I would just also add that that White Marsh Foundation is not involved in this whatsoever, is that right, Rick?
Yeah, they're they're not.
Yeah, it wasn't mentioned, they're not part of this, has nothing to do with it, so I'm not sure where that came from, but.
Well, I just, I got support this week, that's why I mentioned that.
No, you didn't, you, Eli mentioned that, he said they were somehow in charge or involved in this project. So I just wanted to make sure he understood and the public understood that White Marsh Foundation is not a part of this. Rick didn't mention it, they have nothing to do with it.
Let me, let me just add to that as well, if I might, the the documents that uh are available uh to the public are very clear. What can and cannot happen on that site, and they're also very clear that it is the township who will determine what happens on the site. So there's not a third party, not a different entity, it's the township itself. So it's uh, it's very prescriptive and the township reserves the right to control what happens on that property.
I I only brought up the issue about the White Marsh Foundation, Laura had mentioned it in in her presentation of starting this. Um but that was also uh an example of a purchase of a large swath of land. Where there was an entity that was involved and continues to be involved. And it's, if what you say, Vince, is true, that that's fantastic. Um I hope that the township might consider bringing in um uh somebody like Natural Lands uh to help manage the land. Uh if it is going to be passive open space, I would like to see it managed in an environmentally friendly way. Um I would prefer to see it revert back to a farm and have an organization of some type, not-for-profit, come in to do CSA. I think we we need to see more of our own food grown here and um perhaps there's a a way that that can be looked at as well.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comments? Any other board comments?
We have a public comment.
Public.
Uh Mr. Shin would like to unmute himself, he can. Or I can do it if you can't do it.
Yes, uh Rick, is it possible to add video for this?
Sure, go ahead.
All right, it doesn't seem to be working, but um my name is Edmund Shin, I sit on the board uh of the Highlands Historical Society. Uh I just wanted to address Mr. Glick's uh point that was raised. One of the um aspects of uh the commitment of White Marsh to the open space is that. One of the board of supervisors will sit on the board of the Highlands Historical Society. Which I think is a great thing for both parties. And uh it'll provide continuity for not only the White Marsh Board of Supervisors and the Highlands, but communication. And uh it'll allow residents to to have a a level of comfort knowing that uh there's a, there's a team process in place.
Thanks, Ed, and and everyone can see uh all the details in the agreements uh that are available to the public uh through the website.
Thanks, Ed, I appreciate you commenting as a member of our Open Space Committee as well as um on the the Highlands. Rick, do we have the rest of the information on the website? I think we're just advertising the.
The documents, the agreement of sale, and it's all on the agenda for the website, so if you look in the agenda, it's it's all there.
Just double checking here.
Laura, if I may, the ordinance has not yet, itself has not yet been drafted. Uh this is authorization to do that tonight, so that uh we will go ahead and um draft that ordinance and it will be advertised. Uh as well as a public hearing that is required by Act one fifty-three to be held prior to the acquisition of uh real property. Uh with the use of uh earned income tax, so open space funds.
Excellent, thank you uh for clarifying that, Dave, and yes, I do see everything, just wanted to double check that, you know, the. Agenda and associated documents are all there, so thank you, that's, that's all good. Any other comments, I'm just checking the chat. Okay. Are we ready to move on here? So seeing no other comments. Uh all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, all the, the motion passes. Let's make a note here. Thanks. Okay, do I have a motion to authorize the notice of intent to award the public bid to Premier Concrete Incorporated to the amount of. One hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars and fifty cents for the Germantown Pike Pedestrian Crossing. Mr. Miller?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thanks.
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hirsch.
Thank you, Rick. So as stated, this is for the Germantown Pike Pedestrian Crossing Project. The bids were opened on May fourteenth and uh we received five bids. Uh the project is for a mid-block signalized pedestrian crossing. Um it'll have. Um, it'll have rectangular, rapid flashing beacons and a crosswalk, and it'll be located, um, it'll be located in front of, uh, White Marsh, uh, Plymouth White Marsh High School. Um, the low bidder is Premier Concrete in the amount of 128,950 and 50 cents. If all goes well with the RCO, the, uh, intent is for the project to start in mid-July and be wrapped up before, uh, school starts back up in September.
That would be great. Do we have any board comments? I know that the residents on Mayflower and in that surrounding area are eager to have this happen. Um, so I'm excited that this is, we're getting, we're getting there. We're getting closer. Any public comments? Um, Sedell, do you want to, I see a question from Sedell Zove. I think, is that a question related to this? Sedell, the confusion related to Flower Town?
Yes, I, I saw both the, well, I saw a plan, a drawing or sketch included in the, uh, agenda material that referenced a project of Flower Town and Colonial. Is that part of this project for the crosswalk or separate and distinct? I wasn't quite sure.
The Colonial and Flower Town project is a separate and distinct project, but it shares, uh, grant funding with this project, which is a multimodal transportation fund grant. So they're same funding, but different projects.
So the, the bid for, for the crosswalk has nothing, no bearing on the other project?
Yeah.
That'll separately bid?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Great. Thank you for clarifying. Both related to the safety of pedestrians and crossing, particularly with the school district. But good to have it clarified. Any other public comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you. Do I have a motion to authorize the ordinance advertisement to amend Chapter 103 Streets and Sidewalks to protect pavement and services, surfaces?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Miller?
I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Hirsch. He's gonna be on the roll here on this agenda.
Thank you, thank you, Rick. Um, so this ordinance is to, uh, make official and codify a longstanding township policy um, that has a five-year moratorium, um, for road openings on any, uh, roads that have been recently paved. Anytime, you, you pay a lot of money to pave roads and you want to try and limit the amount of new cuts within the roads that you recently paved. So you won't be able to, uh, get a road opening permit to open up a road that we, the township, have paved within the last five years. Um, there are policies in this ordinance, uh, for if it's an emergency. If you, you say you want to connect your house to Pico Gas and that requires a curb cut or a, uh, cut in the road, um, that could be allowed. Uh, but there would be some extra restrictions, you know, potentially, uh, more, uh, milling and overlaying so that you can have, uh, you don't have those, those, uh, two-foot wide, wide cuts that end up turning into almost like speed bumps. Um, so, you know, this just ordinance to, to make it official, something the township's had a policy on for many years.
Well, you know, again, I will say thank you for your insight in making things cleaner. And I think this is one of those things that you're doing that helps have a protection for the township, something that's been happening that needs to be, um, spelled out in writing. So thanks, Jim, for looking into that.
No problem.
Any, any board comment? Any public comments? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Nate, okay. Motion passes. Thank you. Do I have a motion to authorize escrow release number one for 252 Roberts Avenue LLC in the amount of 16,062 dollars and 30 cents? So moved.
Second.
I'm gonna turn this over to Jim.
Thank you. So the request for escrow release came in from the developer. Our representative from my office visited the site to make sure that everything they're requesting is satisfactory. Um, as you may be aware, or you are aware, this is, uh, this project involves a construction of two new single-family homes on Roberts Avenue at the site of the former Lincoln Fire Company. Um, currently, one house, uh, is under construction and, um, their infiltration bed, uh, stormwater management system associated with that has been installed. So they're requesting release of, uh, funds that were, uh, held in escrow to secure that. So the amount referenced in your motion is correct, and we would ask that you, uh, release the funds.
Thank you. Any board comment?
Uh, Jim, just for clarification, the request is, uh, for a release of funds for work that has been completed. And your firm has validated that the work that, that is related to the release request has been completed.
That's correct.
Thank you.
This isn't the final escrow release though, is it?
It is not.
Okay. Any other board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize escrow release number four for White Marsh Knolls Comma LLC, Germantown Pike, in the amount of 96,294 dollars and 77 cents?
So moved.
Second.
Jim?
Yep, thank you. So, uh, the White Marsh Knolls project, uh, off of Westway Drive is continuing with construction. Um, my office has been out there, uh, observing everything that they're doing. And we've been in constant contact with the developer and the residents in the surrounding, uh, area. Um, similarly to the last, uh, project, they requested the release of escrow. We've visited the site to confirm everything that they're asking for is factory, and, uh, we recommend the release of funds in the amount of 96,294 dollars and 77 cents.
So if I may comment here, this is, this project is in my own backyard. I lived over there for a long time, and, um, it has not been easy at all on the neighbors. So what Jim's saying for today, the neighbors are satisfied with where we're at. Satisfied. That does not mean happy. They've endured a lot. So this is like, what I've been able to see is the ripple effect of development. So they have endured a lot, and I appreciate all their patience. But for today, they're satisfied with where we're at. And, um, we'll be ready and willing to meet with them over and over again until we get through this project and they remain satisfied. So for today, we're, we're in decent shape. And we'll call it satisfactory for the escrow release.
Thank you, Fran. I personally appreciate all the time that you have spent in physically being present at that location and talking with the neighbors and, and helping. I know it's been a lot on you as well, so I appreciate all that you're doing with that.
All right, um, I lost my connection for, for a little bit there. You, you hear everything I said about the White Marsh, about the Knolls? Okay, all right, I, we're good. I just got back in.
You're back. We heard ya.
Okay.
Any other board comment? Is there any public comment?
Can I go?
Yes, any public comment? Sure.
So, um, you've heard from me before, uh, talk about the issue with the trees. Um, nobody has responded from the Board of Supervisors. Uh, the township, uh, arborist says he just needs to be sent out there. Um, I did, last month, I did a slide presentation, uh, to the Shade Tree Commission showing various, um, violations of our Shade Tree ordinance in terms of how the trees are protected. Um, there was a couple of comments from Sean, like, well, the builder, they have to take down the fencing so they can do something and then put the fencing back up. That's not the way, uh, uh, protective tree fencing is supposed to work. Um, the, the fencing should have been put in place before the project started. It is supposed to go out to and a little bit past the drip line of the trees to be protected. That was not done. Um, I have pictures of equipment driving on top of roots, compacting roots, um, cutting into roots. Um, I have a picture, if you'll let me, uh, share my, uh, screen, I can show you a picture I just took from June 1st of, um, one of the large trees not protected adequately. The, um, the, uh, fencing is constantly being moved. Uh, at the, I brought this up again at last week's Shade Tree, uh, meeting. Um, I asked the arborist, when he was out to the property last, he said in March, um, these fences constantly move. Now, the interesting thing is, the money was already given back. It was a line item given back to the developer, probably at the first escrow request. And that's because these, this item is supposed to be taken care of before any building takes place. But that's not getting done. So I want to know, why is it not, why is our Shade Tree ordinance not being enforced?
Jim, do you have any comments?
Oh, I know that the arborist has been out to that site on a few occasions since construction has started. Um, I know that the, uh, Sean Halbaum is the liaison, staff liaison to the Shade Tree Commission, and he has been out to that site on a few occasions. And that I have been informed that the tree protection fencing is installed per the plan. So it, tree protection fencing is not exactly in my purview, but before we were to recommend the release of escrow related to that, we would have, we checked with the arborist and Sean to make sure that it was installed in the proper locations.
But Sean doesn't know really anything about trees.
I, I said, I said the arborist was out there, and then I reiterated that the township staff was out there too.
But if there are continued complaints that are given from me and presented on numerous occasions, shouldn't the arborist be sent back out there again to check on it? Um, they're in violation of our Shade Tree ordinance. Most of those trees will die because the heavy equipment is running over their roots, compacting their roots, um, they're damaging the trees. I have experience with this particular builder's father, who built where I live, who did the exact same thing in our area. And trees died long after the builder is gone, long after escrow money is gone. And there's nobody there to take track, to keep track of this.
Fran, I know, Fran, I know that you've been out there with the residents. Has this initiative come up with any of them as well?
It has not.
And maybe for Rick or someone, what, what is, or maybe for Dave or Sean, uh, what, what are the repercussions for violating a Shade Tree ordinance? What, what kind of teeth are in the Shade Tree ordinance?
Um, Mike, I don't know offhand, um, without having the ordinance in front of me. Generally, these are enforced by the issuance of some kind of enforcement notice, uh, advising the, um, wrongdoer that, uh, the township believes that he or she is violating the ordinance. Um, obviously, they can, uh, repair the, uh, the violation, uh, by stopping the violation. Uh, if they don't, um, it may end up going to, uh, Magisterial District Court, uh, at which time the, uh, the offender can be fined. But, um, again, without having the ordinance in front of me, I don't know what the applicable fines are. But that's generally how the enforcement procedure would work.
Uh, that makes sense. Uh, that's what I would assume as well. I mean, I, I, I would recommend, Laura, I don't know if this makes sense, but maybe have the arborist, um, you know, I, I don't know if you've talked to the arborist. I, I haven't. And obviously Sean's, you know, on family leave. He's available, of course, I'm sure if we had a question for him. But I wonder if it's appropriate for the arborist, just to provide us with some feedback, either write up a report for, for us or to, you know, talk to him about, you know, what he's seen out there.
May I share my screen?
I'm, I'm talking to Laura right now, so just wait a second.
Jim, do you have an idea of when, um, John Hosbach was out there last?
I, I don't know off the top of my head. Um, I know he was out there, you know, towards the start of construction, which is generally, um, you know, when he goes out to ins- to inspect the tree protection fencing. I, I mean, Eli said he had a picture from Ju- June 1st. It would surprise me if he was out there, you know, more recently than that. I like, I like, uh, Supervisor Drosner's suggestion to have the arborist go out and write up a report for you guys.
I agree. Rick, would you kindly coordinate with, uh, Mr. Hosbach to have him visit and get a report back?
We do.
And to take it one step further, can we, uh, ask him to make periodic inspections? I mean, one-time report is great, but this is a very fluid construction site, so it might benefit from having periodic inspections.
Good idea.
And, and this has nothing to do with the neighbors. Um, I've been committed to our township's trees, Mike. You know that very well. This has nothing to do with, uh, whether the neighbors complain. I'm a neighbor. I live here. These are my trees too. They, they affect my quality of life. I was sad to see that property developed. Um, and whatever mature trees that are there and are supposed to be preserved, I want to see every single one of them preserved.
Eli, I understand that. I wasn't saying that your opinion did not matter, right? Just because I say their opinion matters, doesn't mean your opinion doesn't matter, right? So those two things can both exist. You can have an opinion about the trees, and the neighbors can have an opinion also about the trees, since they live in that neighborhood and the trees are, are there also to, to benefit them, provide shelter and, and all kinds of other positive aspects of the environment. So I just wanted to know if this is an issue for the neighbors who live there every day, who see it, if it's something that they've noticed and they've talked about.
Well, perhaps the neighbors should come, um, to, to these meetings when escrow is released. Because I, I hear different things than what Fran has heard from some of the neighbors, um, about what's going on.
I have no comment to Eli. I talk with the neighbors every single day and I'm over there every day. This hasn't come up. Neighbors are never going to be happy with this site. Bottom line, everyone's suffering. So we have to get through it together. That's the bottom line. They are going to be set, they're satisfied for today. That's all I'm saying.
And I think, you know, it's important to, you know, the comment of having the arborist go out periodically, it's not just at the beginning of the project. I mean, this is a, certainly a heightened project with relation to the, the ground being disturbed and the fencing and the trees, that he go out on a regularly scheduled basis, um, throughout the duration of the project and report back. Uh, if we can set up a timetable, Rick, if that can be part of it along with Jim, so that you are coordinating together, so this just doesn't kind of get by the wayside.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other, uh, public comment? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Give me one second here. Okay, let's go on to expenditures. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling one million, six hundred and four thousand, three hundred and five dollars and five cents? And payroll totaling eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-six cents? And pension paid costs totaling eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-four cents for May twenty twenty.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
No comment ahead.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve a hold harmless agreement for a fence in the ultimate right-of-way at one thirty-five Stanton Avenue? Mr. Miller?
I'm happy to uh, describe this to the board. Uh, this is a hold harmless agreement for a fence uh, in front of the property at one thirty-five Stanton Avenue. It is a uh, three-foot-tall, two-rail post and rail fence, um, eight feet behind the um, white fog line. Um, since the intersections were involved, uh, the Township Engineers Office was asked to do a site distance study. Um, they went out and did that and concluded um, that there was adequate site distance from the driveway at this address, as well as the driveway that could potentially be impacted next door at one oh seven Stanton Avenue. And as a result of the adequate site distance and the lowering of the fence height, this had originally been a taller fence proposal, um, the Township Engineers Office has recommended approval of the hold harmless agreement. And as you know, or as I'm sure you do, but just for public benefit, the hold harmless agreement, if approved, is then um, recorded against the property. Um, so that if a future owner uh, buys the property, they take on the responsibilities and indemnification that the original owner took on when they um, signed this particular hold harmless agreement. And I just mentioned that as a point of interest because there was a recent um, review that I was doing where a fence was encroaching into another um, ultimate right-of-way. And we went back into the records and found that the predecessor type of agreement to the hold harmless had been established and recorded uh, thirty-four or thirty-six years ago, and it still applies to the current owner. So that's what happens with these hold harmless agreements. They uh, are recorded against the property and stay with the land.
Thanks, Charlie.
You're welcome.
Any board comment? Any public comment? I don't see any related to this. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the installation of a driveway extension at six Marple Lane? Charlie?
Thank you. Uh, this is in the Historic District, and um, the Historic Auction Review Board met yesterday morning and reviewed this project. Uh, this is, as you would drive in Marple Lane from Germantown Pike behind the um, small office complex, thirty-seven Germantown Pike. This is the first house on the left. Um, and you've um, approved a couple of different certificates of appropriateness over the last couple of years. The owner of this house has made substantial improvements and put on a a substantial addition to this house. Um, he now would like to extend his driveway back to a shed. Uh, the current driveway ends toward the front of the house. He'd like to extend it seventy feet back to access a shed that exists uh, in the rear yard. Harb had no issues with it and made a recommendation unanimously uh, for approval of the certificate of appropriateness.
And they met with Harb yesterday?
Yes, and the applicants were present and they discussed it with Harb, and Harb saw no issue with it at all.
Any board comment? Any public comment? Uh, Sedell, it seems like, is asking to confirm if the existing shed is legally present.
Yes.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the installation of a covered deck at six Catherine Lane? Mr. Guttenplan?
Thank you. Um, this was the other um, item on the Harb's agenda yesterday. Uh, this is in the Maple Hill Development, um, off of Spring Mill Road. You've seen a lot of um, stipends of appropriateness here because people are moving into their homes and making improvements and trying to get um, better outdoor um, living arrangements. You've seen a number of patios. This is the first deck, I think, we've seen. Um, again, similar to the patios that have been approved and built in the development. It's in the rear of the home. It's not visible from the street. Uh, this is a brand-new home, as are all the others that we've been looking at on Catherine Lane. Uh, and the applicant um, is asking to put in a deck of approximate dimensions of forty-one by nineteen, um, not quite the width of the um, back of the house. A portion of the deck would be covered with an A-frame roof, and the rest of the deck would be open. It is a Trex deck, and the um, only concerns that the um, Harb had was they wanted to see the material specifications and colors that were chosen, because those were not part of the initial application, and they wanted staff to make sure that there was no conflict with the design guidelines for the Historic District. So they made a motion to that effect, subject to staff reviewing the um, m- material specifications and confirming that there was no conflict with the guidelines. They unanimously recommended approval. Um, immediately after the meeting was over, the applicant who was present at the meeting sent me the specifications. I reviewed them, um, and I reviewed the guidelines and found that there was no conflict with the guidelines, and there were no issues with the materials. Um, they were perfectly acceptable and of reasonable color. There was just concern that they wanted to know that they were um, earth tones or reasonable colors and not something that would be out of character. Um, so I got back to the Harb members and confirmed that. Uh, so that confirms their um, motion uh, for approval. And so I'm asking the board to um, approve the certificate of appropriateness.
Thank you. I mean, we've had a lot of the homes back in that area come before us with, you know, approval for decks. Is this, this is in alignment with, it seems similar to the others that have come?
It's a little different. Um, most of the others have been paper patios. Um, this owner has chosen to do a deck instead, which frankly, uh, except for the area that's covered up with the roof, is not impervious. So actually, from that standpoint, it's uh, uh, it's a superior improvement from a stormwater standpoint.
Excellent, thank you. Any board comment? Any public comments?
This is Sedell, so yes, I have a comment.
Sedell, are you able to?
Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, what I wrote in the chat um, is that this, although this is somewhat off-topic, but related, based on all the site plans that have been submitted with the certificate of appropriate applications for the decks and patios in this development, it appears that the historic one-room Maple Hill Schoolhouse stands within what's identified as the common area of this development. If that is indeed correct, is it the case that the Homeowner Association has a role to play in its maintenance?
Charlie, would you have any insight on that?
Honestly, I'd have to review the documents. I believe the homeowner has responsibility, even though it's on the common grounds, those common grounds are a portion of that lot. And my understanding, uh, and again, I don't have the um, the declaration, the various documents in front of me, but my understanding was that the homeowner has responsibility for the maintenance of that building.
Does the township have in its files for this project a copy of the document that that governs, um, I don't know what it's called, but the Homeowner Association document that spells out its responsibility?
My understanding is they would have been reviewed by the Solicitor's Office at the time, so they were known to us. Whether they're physically in the file, without me going to look, I can't answer that question specifically. But I'm sure they're available.
So, just to to recap, I I think it would be useful to know whether the maintenance of the schoolhouse, the historic one-room schoolhouse, falls exclusively upon the homeowner, or given that it is located in what is identified as the common area, does the Homeowner Association, Homeowners Association, share some responsibility or have some sort of enforcement power as a result of the agreement? The document that governs the rules and regulations, whatever that's called. And I, and I would ask that someone look into that.
I mean, I, I, so we can look into it, but it it seems a little bit, I don't know what the right word is, a little bit maybe unreasonable or disingenuous to have someone buy a property with this historic structure on it, knowing that they're responsible for it, and then try to make the other twenty area properties all responsible for this historic building without any prior notice whatsoever that they'd have to do so. Just because we could legally come up with a way to make them responsible for it, I'm not so sure that that's appropriate.
Well, I'm not suggesting that 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 is the case or should be the case. I just want to understand the facts. Given, given that the schoolhouse is located in what is identified as the common area, what responsibility, if any, does the Homeowners Association have? Even if it's merely to um, compel enforcement with some, with a maintenance standard. I I just want to understand the facts, that's all.
We can certainly look into that. Um, Mr. Miller, can you put that on our list of things to to check in on?
Sure can.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments related to six Catherine Lane? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. So that brings us to the end of our uh, action items to consider and move into public comment period.
Sure, Nestor, can I just make a, just to make it organized? If someone could just say on chat they'd like to make a public comment, so we don't have a bunch of people talking at once, that would be great.
Am I on? Hello?
Yes, we do have, if you could say your name and address.
Yeah, I don't know how this works, but I'm learning. My name is John Grant. I'm a twenty-seven-year resident of White Marsh Township. I'm a journalist. And first, I want to thank you for having the opportunity of this. I want to thank uh, Chief Ward for his comments, um, which were good to hear. Um, my concern is that um, that we establish accountability and uh, transparency in our police department for the future. Uh, I'm not so concerned about the past, although that is a concern for me. But uh, I have two points. I have one, a question. Uh, we started with a Coffee with the Cop program, which, you know, went for a while. It didn't go very well, and it's now fizzled out. Uh, you know, for various reasons, uh, I don't know. But one of the problems was it was never a predictable moment. It wasn't once a month on the first, you know, the first Thursday of every month at certain time or something. So, nobody knew. I could never publicize it. No, you know, it was uncertain when it was going to be. So I wondered if maybe we could consider doing that again, because I I think it's a good thing to have. Uh, two, um, there's been talk of having a town meeting, a citizens' town meeting, which, you know, I think is in development, and uh, you know, to talk about some of these police issues. And um, you know, the Chief Ward and and members of the Police Department will certainly be cordially invited and hope they come. And then we can have a serious discussion about this stuff, again, you know, focused on the future. Uh, which a friend of mine, who's a trucker in Kansas, talks about because of the pandemic, and now because of all this stuff in the street, et cetera, all this trifecta of problems we're all faced in, and everybody's scared like crazy, that this country, including our local lives, uh, is in a tunnel, and it's going to be a different country when we come out of it. Uh, and so I would like to have some input with others uh, to make sure that our police department is a good police department, which I think it is. I've said many times, uh, you know, that the the leadership is good and and uh, the supervision is good, and and I have no great complaints about that. So I just wanted to uh, ask the question about Coffee with the Cop and um, mention that a town meeting may be in order. Um, so that I'm finished there. Thank you. Does Chief Ward have any comment on that?
Well, I I will start by saying that, you know, I thank you for your comments. And like I had said at the beginning of the meeting, we are looking at various mechanisms and ways to work collectively together. And if instituting coffee, you know, with cops is one of them, you know, I I know the chief has specifically said to me he's open to all options, so. Chief, do you have any comments?
Thank you. Uh, as my department, we're open to anything uh, with the public, with the Board of Supervisors, with senior staff here in the township. Again, COVID nineteen has restricted us. These are discussions that we've had, and yeah, I wish we didn't have both these things going on right now. Uh, I'm sure there's been discussions uh, with the supervisors about this and different ideas and plans moving forward. Uh, once we have restrictions removed, uh, Uh, once we have restrictions removed, uh, I believe as a township, not just the police department, we're open to discuss any and all things moving forward. This was the first step tonight. Uh, and we will move forward to make sure that the residents and our local people have the opportunity to speak with me, members of my staff, members of the township. Um, again, I, COVID nineteen, I don't like you. I'll just leave it at that, you know, so. Um, I believe and I believe members of the supervisors, we've had discussions preliminarily and, and we're trying to get through that to make sure we get all of our residents the opportunity to speak with us, whatever their concerns would be, whether they're the ones we're seeing today or other concerns that we're not thinking.
Uh, thank you. Uh, uh, just to close, my concern is um uh, this, this whole movement towards militarizing of the police versus the community police, which of course the model being discussed now is Camden. I did story on Camden twenty years ago when they started all this, and Camden has done absolutely amazing things uh as to how they've made uh the citizens of Camden uh work with their police. Uh, it's, it's, it's a great story. So um, that's my concern. Although we are suburb, we're not like Camden, obviously.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
We're not Camden.
Right, I know, I know.
And, and let me just say as well that, you know, we are committed as a board and as a township to ensure that we all do what we can to root out racism, that we do what we can to provide meaningful oversight and we will explore governance opportunities as a board and as a township, working in partnership with the police department to ensure that happens. And, and the, the Chief Ward and, and his department are in, in in fact, are partners in this effort and, and we look forward to working with them.
Sedell, I believe you had some comments um from earlier this meeting. Would you like to share them now?
Yes, uh, this is uh, uh, I'd like to address this to Chief Ward. Um, I deeply appreciate um the statement that you um read aloud uh and circulated previously. Uh, and I truly believe that you are committed um to pursuing a, a course of justice here. Um, I have a specific question about the body cameras, and I understand that you're looking into that. You've done some preliminary cost uh analysis. But my question is whether it really is necessary to have one camera for every officer, and I think you said there were seventy officers. Might it be adequate to have sufficient number to outfit each officer who's on duty during the shift and the cameras can be shared? And wouldn't that be a way to contain cost?
Well, let me, let me start first. Uh, we have thirty-six officers. Um, if they'll give me seventy, I'll go with that. That's a different conversation. Uh, we have thirty-six officers. Uh, there's a lot of study out there, industry standards, I'm not going to bore you. These are, since they're mounted to the officer when they have them, they have to be recharged. So shifts having the number of cameras, you get into a lot of dynamics, and we've looked into different dynamics on that. But here's the problem you run into, and other places have already run into this, and this is why we would say this. If I have ten cameras and there's eleven police officers on duty, then someone doesn't have one. And then they say, we did that on purpose, or we should have known better, we should have planned better. And if we do have eleven cameras and twelve, I could go on and on. The fact that on some big events recently, I had as men, many as fifteen officers on duty, we have to have cameras, they have to be recharged. There's also studies on the care and upkeep of these cameras. When they're shared, shift after shift, they don't last. There's not ownership. There's a lot of difficulty. Using the one camera, one officer has been the best results police departments have seen for wear and tear durability costs, but also accountability and the ability to, when there is a problem, we can't have excuses. There's no excuse. That's why we have that many. We can look over that. I, I'm not going to keep going on here. Um, it's something we're going to have to decide budgetary and also procedurally. Uh, but you never want to have more officers than cameras on duty. That immediately causes a problem. Uh, uh, and even if it's done inadvertently, there's always that accusation and look, and we're not that's a discussion we will have as we move forward with that.
Well, I, I, I appreciate that. That's a, a, obviously, there's been careful thought applied to this um, this issue. I suspect that um this would be the time for police departments that do not have body cameras to go out and seek uh grants um to acquire them. I think there would be a tremendous willingness on the part of um the, the um world of, of foundations and government sources to provide funds to make such purchases. I think um this is the time to, to look around um for sources of funding to make that happen. I think the cameras do two things, obviously. Um, they create a permanent record of what occurred. They protect the officers and they protect um the people who are having encounters with the police. So thank you very much, and um I, I hope you can um get as many cameras as you need.
Thank you. I, and just so we're, we've looked into cameras long before we got into what we're dealing with today, and that has been discussions and there's a lot of reasons as I sta- stated in my statement. Uh, but I am sure moving forward, we will be looking at it even harder uh and with more vigor and again, conversation with the people you see here about that.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any other comments?
I'd like to say uh something. Um, these are, these are times of uh difficult conversations. And my wife and I and our friends, we've been having some difficult conversations. And um what I'm going to raise tonight um will likely be difficult and un, and uncomfortable. Um, I, I believe that our police uh should be a reflection of our society as a whole. Um, wh- what I've been hearing from police departments, from Chief Ward tonight, um, they've been talking about procedural issues, compliance issues and things like that. But I think that we need to be looking to cultural issues. Um, uh, you can have all the sensitivity training you want, um, but unless you're working side by side with people that are different from you, um, it's hard really to have an intimate understanding. And I look at the White Marsh Police Department, all white. Mostly men, except for two women, I believe. Concha Hocken, the same. Um, Plymouth, I believe, is the same also. Our community, yes, is mostly white in White Marsh, but we're a pass-through community. We have people coming through White Marsh of all different races, of all different uh ethnic backgrounds. Um, and they potentially are going to face our police department. Um, and I think that a, a, a more integrated police department should be the future for uh all communities. Um, and, and, and I, I, I think we really have to have a serious conversation about that. Um, you know, you look at a city like Newark, and I, and I realize we're not comparing apples to apples, but there was active recruiting to bring people from their community to police academies and become subsequent police. Um, and, and I think that's the only way we learn from one another, is to work together um in, in, in our place of work. Um, and, and I hope that we, we can do that. I hope we, as a community of White Marsh, uh, can become more diverse in our police department. Thank you.
Eli, you, you raised an excellent point. It's not an uncomfortable one. It's an accurate one. It's actually a conversation we've had with Chief Ward many, many times. Um, you know, when every time he puts out, you know, notice that they're hiring, we talk to him, and I think he'll, you know, I hope that he'll, you know, take a couple of minutes to explain to you some of the, what he has done to try and diversify our police force. There have been some challenges there. There may be some institutional issues there that we're having a hard time overcoming. Uh, but it's something we'll certainly double down on, but it's, it's, I don't think it's uncomfortable. I think it's accurate. It's something that we have had um over and over again with him to encourage it. Um, and I certainly, you know, I hope Chief can kind of explain a little bit more about what he's done to just make the attempts to diversify our workforce.
Well, and I, and I appreciate your sharing that with me. Um, um, you're talking to me, right, Michael?
I thought you were done with your, with your comments, and then I, I was letting Chief talk. Well, go ahead.
Well, I think that you're saying that now is something that I've never heard before, and I don't know if any resident has heard that talked about. And I think that if you talk about that in, in a public environment like this um and share that information regularly, that you're looking to diversify the police department um and you share that with the public and not just keep that with, within the um confines of of, of the uh supervisors and meeting with the other staff, I think that goes a long way to show the residents, you know, what you're, what you're up to.
That's why I shared it.
Can I make one brief comment?
Let's, uh, let's let the chief uh comment.
Please, please, okay.
Yep.
Um, uh, there's a lot there, but in hiring, we're in a hiring process right now. And we have uh made a lot of efforts this year alone, not to mention in the past, uh, meeting with the NAACP, going and speaking with the students at Lincoln University, a predominantly historically black university, and have discussed them applying for jobs not only here, but as police officers, whether it be in Montgomery County or anywhere, and offered our assistance to help them with that. We've advertised in predominantly black newspapers to try to get more diverse applicants. Um, we don't get a diverse applicant pool. We're one of the few agencies that will still pay to send a, a new officer to the academy uh to remove what some people think is an economic uh block that if you don't send yourself to the academy, which would cost you money, that you wouldn't work for us. We want the best candidate for the job. If that person has training, okay. If they don't, we will send them. Uh, the board, not only on this hiring cycle, but on previous hiring cycles, we've had these discussions. Um, I will say, it's not my place necessarily. For us, yes, we have three female police officers. I don't know the number of female officers in Plymouth. Uh, it's two or three, I, and don't quote me. They do have uh officers of color over there. Concha Hocken does have a, an officer of color there. I'm unaware of any females in Concha, but that's not, I'm just stating that so people know that. Um, we are trying very hard to recruit the best applicants for the job, but the best people, but also to get a diversified application pool. Uh, if you put the job out there, you generally can only hire from the people who apply. So we're working very hard, looking for different angles, different ways to get a diversified pool of men, women, you know, different ethnic, racial, you name it. That's, we want that, and we want the best candidates for the job for White Marsh Township.
Thanks, thanks, Steve. I think that's a good explanation. I would, I would also add that from what I've learned, the, the application process to be a police officer is quite, it's long. It's, it's not just one submission and they review it and fix it once. You know, there's paperwork, there's physical endurance, there's, you know, ongoing testing. It, it is a complicated process and sometimes what ends up happening is, you know, they might start with a hundred or so applications. In the end, they're, they're choosing between two or three people that have kind of made it to the end, or maybe seven or eight. I don't know what the numbers are, but it is, it is a, a complex and lengthy process.
Uh, if, if I could, I did a, some, some research uh over the census over the last thirty years, I think it was. And if you project it up as a graph, i- i- if I'm correct, it looks like the twenty-twenty census, the black population of White Marsh Township will be about fourteen percent, which is the national demographic of the black population. So uh I just wanted to throw that back out.
These are all the good conversations that need to happen and I'm glad are happening. Thank you, Eli and John for, for your comments and Sedell. Um, you know, this is fluid. This is a work in progress and we will strive to keep moving forward together. Do we have other?
Laura.
Go ahead.
Um, when we go into hiring, there's many large discussions had both at a local level and on an industry level, both in the county, in the state and through the International Association of Chiefs of Police. Uh, we're fortunate that our senior staff does participate with a lot of different organizations, and we are always looking for like everything else, new ways to recruit, new ways to get a, a different pool. We, and we're always open to those suggestions and we have those discussions. And it's not just myself, my senior staff, I, I get them out there. I get them involved, try to, you know, bring me back that new idea, that new thing uh for us. And that's the way we have to work to stay, to stay relevant i- in police work. And I, I don't, you know, i- i- I wish you, I wish you weren't, it's across the board, we have these issues and problems in hiring and making sure that we do the best we can, and we're trying our best to be in front of that and do the best we can, while at the same time doing the best for White Marsh Township. We hire people for what we expect to be a twenty-five-year career here with White Marsh.
Thank you. Luanne, did you have a comment?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to um again, thank um the chief for his comments and for the good work that you're doing, and also let you know that it's been um surprising and um humbling for me to be part of a group that's building on Facebook. There's five hundred members of a group that we're calling the Colonial Area Anti-Racism and Social Equity Alliance. And it's a powerful group of many, many, many people in our community and um there's a lot of events that people are planning just on their own, spontaneous. Um, and I, I just wanted to lift this up. So there's um Plymouth White Marsh High School students that are planning an event at Miles Park on July fourth. There's um elementary school mothers that want to do a circle the park event for children. Um, we're planning some um lawn signs for Black Lives Matter, and I, we're just so busy right now with people jumping out of the woodwork wanting to um work for justice, for um, for black lives. And I, I just want to say that um building community has never been ever, for me, ever more exciting. And uh it's a, it's a very painful history we have, and a lot of people are very willing to read and learn and discuss and um want, want to reform things. And so I, you know, feel that we're in a very fortunate place. And I want to thank you, uh, Chief Ward, for your openness. I, I see some interest in a public forum, and I just want to lift that up as something that I'm hearing from the community, that a town hall meeting around these issues would be really um important at some point. How it happens, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Luanne, and I appreciate your comments because I think what you're touching on right there is not just related to the police, but you know, the community at large and but, you know, the community at large and the need to shift individual mindsets. And what Eli was commenting on earlier as well about, um, you know, coming together to, um, understand each other and listen to each other and diversity, uh, understanding diversity across the board. So, it's not just a police issue, it's a community issue, it's an individual issue.
School.
Chief, anything else?
No, I'm, you know, unless anybody has questions, again, we're open, we, we want conversation. We want, you want to learn, you want to be responsive to the community. Uh, I wish COVID nineteen wasn't here, it would make things easier to do it quicker. But we'll get there, I mean, this, this two shall pass, as they say. You know, I'm a child of this, this, I grew up here. I'm a child of this village and I don't want this village to be, you know, wrong for anyone. And we will, we'll work with everybody and speak with everybody as a group to make sure that that, everybody is heard, everybody has the chance.
Very much agree. Yeah, go ahead, Fran.
Sorry, Laura, before you move on, it's Fran. Um, I was kind of fortunate to have like an impromptu, uh, meeting, I have some of the residents here with me tonight. Socially distanced, of course. Uh, so JL and Jane Brown from, uh, Five 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 and Door Glen Court. So, they had a couple of questions for, for Chief. And the one, first of all, they were complimentary, they, they really want to meet with you. So, the first question is, do the police have cultural diversity training individually?
Yes, we, and there's a lot of different training that comes from different points. Um, our go-to used to always be Chief Oscar Vance at the county detectives. He would help us bring in a lot of stuff. Uh, Chief Vance is retired but still active in the Norris Town area. And, uh, he helps bring in stuff and we reach out, the NAACP has offered. There's a lot of training out there, we get them as much as we can when it's offered and, and when we can do it. So, yes, there is, there could always be more. Um, you know, uh, I believe both of the, the women you're speaking of, Fran, I speak, think I spoke to them uh, Monday during the peaceful, uh, protest demonstration in Miles Park.
That's correct. So. So. So, is it, so I guess Ja- Jane is just repeating, is there going to be some current training that will go on that might be a little bit more in-depth in light of the issues of today?
I wholly.
Any changes to that?
As I said, I wholly expect that there's going to be changes in policy procedures, but also in training. As we learn from things that occurred, uh, the training will come out. Uh, it, I don't want to say it hasn't been enough time, but there hasn't been enough time to develop good training on this very subject of anything we learned in the last two, three weeks that's different that we have to implement, but it will be coming out and we'll be looking for it again. Everything in training is as, as we sit here virtually as everything else is.
All right, the other question was around mental illness, that's for our police. So, do we have any type of debriefing for our own officers for their mental? And so, when they come off a shift or, you know, periodically during, during their employment, do we have like some sort of debriefing within the department with a professional? Or is that not mandated for everyone or, or what?
That, that's a broad topic, we have Delaware Valley Insurance Trust. Delaware Valley Trust, I'm sorry, they've changed their name, they offer immediately any services. And that's for us, White Marsh Township, because they support us. We can contact them twenty-four, seven for an officer, the officer can contact them. The officer's family can contact them, because sometimes it's not me, it's, it's my wife or my children that may have it. And we have that available. On a professional level, there is a, uh, an incident, um, and I, the, it just left my mind and Sean, if you, the SISAM team, that on any serious incident, we bring in the team to speak to the officers, uh, and we offer it. Cops, we can be hard-headed, sometimes we don't like to talk to other people. There are other police officers that are members of this SISAM team, they're trained to start the process, to debrief and decompress these officers and get them to the services that they need, if they need them. So, yes, there, there's a lot out there, I spoke about it, there's some that's other police officers, which there's some of that pride issue there. Another of it through our, through the township, through our insurance carrier, through our insurance program. And, uh, there's things in place anonymously, and as I said, myself as a supervisor, or any of our supervisors can dictate that forward. So, yes, there are things out there.
Good, thanks, Chief.
I asked for, uh, Sean Kilkeny to join us. I know Dave Sanders is here representing as, um, solicitor. Uh, but Sean also serves in the role of county sheriff. And I think he has a couple of things, Sean, if you have a moment?
Uh, thank you very much, a pleasure to be here in White Marsh. And, uh, just to be clear, I'm wearing a different hat for the purposes of, uh, of this, uh, tonight. First of all, uh, the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office, we have a hundred and fifteen deputies and twenty administrative staff. We have a great working relationship, uh, with the White Marsh Police Department. Uh, in serving warrants, investigations, support, and White Marsh is among the best departments in the, the county. I would say the best, but I don't want to get some of my, in trouble with some of the other chiefs who I'm happy to be friends with, uh, throughout the county. So, it is truly a pleasure, it's been a horrific two weeks for the country and law enforcement, uh, in general. And I do want to, um, uh, echo some of the things that the Chief, um, has said. Um, it is really hard, uh, to hire a diverse workforce in law enforcement. Um, there are all sorts of, and some of them may be, a lot of it probably is, um, the George Floyd situation and others that have become publicized because there is a stigma, not only in minority communities, but frankly, younger people in joining law enforcement today that didn't exist ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. Um, because of bad public relations and bad actors in law enforcement ruining it for the vast majority of folks in law enforcement that do a great job on a daily basis. And it's tough, so, um, I don't know, Chief can comment, but just in general, where we may have had, you know, fifty applications to be a deputy sheriff, now we'd get ten or twelve. So, it's, it's drastic. Um, and I'll tell you a little bit about an experience I had. Um, before I was elected sheriff, I was not a police officer or sheriff. I was a lawyer, uh, still am, um, soldier, things like that. So, I had some, I had some analogous experience, uh, but not directly on. The General Assembly passed a wall saying that you had to become a police officer or sheriff, uh, by the end of your first term to be eligible to run for reelection. So, I greatly enjoy being sheriff, so I wanted to run for reelection. Uh, so I had to go for the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency and be certified. That included about two months in the Montgomery County Police Academy. I was a little more mature than most of the cadets there, to say the least. I'd say the average age was probably about twenty-three or whatever. And, uh, you know, uh, doing defensive tactics with an old, old pudgy guy like me, uh, must have been, uh, interesting. But the thing that really struck me in the class of about forty cadets, and this is in Montgomery County, uh, for a potential career that's very well-paid. I mean, if you're a suburban police officer, you are compensated very, very well. Um, much better than a lot of other jobs out there. There were, um, everybody looked like me. Everybody, uh, I was older, but everybody was essentially a white guy. And, um, there was one woman, she dropped out, there was no people of color. And this was the pool from which many of our police departments were drawing from. So, it was kind of frustrating. So, I think all of us have to look at ourselves in, in law enforcement and figure out what we need to do by, with our standards. Some great topics as far as demilitarization of the police and community policing came up. And I know people are going to be looking at that. Our office has done a couple of things and suggests to Chief. Um, we do our, uh, diversity training through the Anti-Defamation League. And they did, uh, they went over it to Monco Fire Academy and they did a great presentation for our officers. And I, I walked in and, uh, I was expecting people to hiss at me, saying, why are you making me, uh, go through all this? And as Chief said, we, a lot of my folks too, aren't exactly the warm and fuzzy types, don't like talking about feelings or their experiences and stuff, that's something we need to change as a culture. Um, but, uh, not only was it a great day and definitely helped overcome some of my cultural biases and some of my officers, uh, the reviews I got from my deputies were good. I would say nine out of the ten of them told me that they thought it was worthwhile and helped them. Uh, so, that was a, that, that was a great experience. So, it's been a really tough week in, uh, in my role as county sheriff. I want to thank the citizens of White Marsh and the White Marsh Police. And I look forward to working with Chief Ward, uh, as part of the law enforcement community and as White Marsh is a lawyer in, um, you know, implementing some reforms so that we can do better.
Thank you, Sean, very much appreciate you taking the time to talk.
And I'm sorry, Sean, I didn't know which hat you were wearing tonight, so I, I didn't want to go there. But I think you also can agree with me that at our chief's meeting, this will be a hot topic. And, uh, Sean has, you know, if that's the best training, we're all going to get it. And Sean's going to have to be the one through his agency to facilitate, we share and we do that. So, they're the things I'm talking about, the, the sharing and, you know, it's not all has to be us to find. We all share, if you find the best wheel, we all use it, so. And, uh, you know, that, they're the things and, and there'll be, there's been discussions, I'm sure you're in discussions with other people, just as I am. And that's what we'll do to make sure that our folks, Sean's sheriff and our officers have the best that we can get. So.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm checking chat. Does anybody else, board or public, have any other comments? Just pause for a moment, this is heavy. I know there's a lot, a lot to process. All right, well, I thank everybody for your participation tonight, staff, public, people watching, streaming at home, and I hope we continue this when we're back in, in the building together, that we continue to stream and reach people that maybe we haven't been able to reach before. Um, I'd like to announce that we did have an executive session where we reviewed litigation.
Laura, before we adjourn, I'd like to ask, Rick, I just want to put something on your radar, it just came up. Uh, do, are we having any Juneteenth celebrations, if we could find that out from Tom? And, um, June nineteenth? Is it Juneteenth, they're just asking if we're having anything planned, I guess that would go to Tom. So, I just want to put that on your radar.
I'm, I'm not sure, I will check.
Thank you. Are we good? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sorry, yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay, motion carries, thank you all, be safe, take care.
All right, everyone, stay well.
Thank you, everyone.